Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I will call to order the April 13th Board of Commissioners meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Will you please stand, join me in the flag salute and stand remaining for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
If everyone will make sure that all microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now if Brad or IT Director could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning. Assuming that folks are using the Zoom client to get into the meeting, if you select the Participants tab toward the bottom of the screen, over toward the right-hand corner of the screen, you will see a raise hand function that will activate. Select Raise Hand and that lets the host know that you'd like to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. At this time, we'll move into our Citizens Input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak?
Hello, my name's Dennis Benoit. I live in Geneseal, but I was born here, so I consider this my hometown. I'd like to just talk a few minutes about gene therapy. If you don't know what's in the shot and they don't tell you that is gene therapy, then do not take it. That's my choice for my body and I advise everybody out there, this is mRNA. The M is, means it's a messenger. It is gene therapy. It is not a vaccine, gene therapy, and it is not ready for prime time. Moderna has been working on this for over 10 years and it is still experimental. So just remember, don't make a mistake because what the message is, is a little recipe and it's going to go into your body and program literally every cell to what it was to something else. It's got a recipe. It's going to keep on doing that possibly forever. So don't take the shot if you don't know what's in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else like to speak? Good morning.
Good morning. Rosemary Myss, Salina, Kansas. I just want-
Can you pull that mic down just a little bit?
Okay. I would like to just ask some questions and maybe you can give me some answers because I don't understand some of this stuff. I understand as of today, the county mask mandate is rescinded, right?
Yes.
The way you voted last week? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. Now, a week ago, when we attended the City Commission meeting, they said they would wait until the county decided what to do and so last week you voted to rescind it in one week. So yesterday then this, and in that meeting, Melissa Hodges stated that whatever the county does, the city would abide because the city of Salina is in the county. So then yesterday, they voted against rescinding the mask mandate and I don't quite understand doing, how the county and city work according to that. If you could please explain it to me, I would appreciate it because I don't quite understand the two governments and like to know just how this mask mandate is going to work under these circumstances. Thank you.
Okay, and I can try, but do you want to answer, or I can-
This isn't a question and answer period.
If we're done with public comment, I could certainly-
Please.
So the city of Salina is an independent body and they've adopted their ordinance under their home rule authority, which is under the Kansas Constitution. So the county has authority and the city has independent authority to adopt ordinances within the city limits. So there you go.
And that's, that's the basics of the whole situation. Where the county, county has their policies and the city has their policies and the city voted not to follow them. So they have their rules. So that's how that will work. Thank you. Any other people like to comment?
I just have, well, I wasn't really in the comments, but I just, that's kind of confusing. Mary K. Coon, Salina, Kansas. In the Journal, it said, "The county's mandate is for the entirety of the Celine County, which includes Salina." So that's the city of Salina, right?
Right, correct.
Okay. So, "Any action by the county would be enforceable within the city limits, no matter what the city decided." That's confusing too. I think, that's a confusing statement.
And, and that just kind of, I don't know that, but I'm just going to say, it's like the city still has their regulations that they can't enforce.
But you see how it's confusing now?
Yes, you bet. Yes, yes.
You guys did the right thing. So I applaud you. So very thankful for, because it's a freedom issue, basically. But yeah, last night was, that was disastrous. But this is confusing, I think.
Okay, thank you. And Brad, you say you have some?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Linay Meyer. I have two hands raised. Linay Meyer, unmute.
Yes, I just want to say that I am totally supportive of what the city decision was. I think they used wisdom and common sense. Of course, I know it was a two-to-two vote, but enough to, to hold on to the mandate. And I just wish the county commissioners would take a look at a big, big picture and look at, at the issues with the continued cases and perhaps change their vote. I hope you don't have to, but I think it's a reality that it might happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Linay. Yes, next.
Mr. Chairman, Chad Farber has his hand raised.
Okay. Good morning, Chad.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I just wanted to come in this morning and say, yes, there is a lot of confusion right now between Salina and Celine County and that conflagration and complication between one body ruling one way and another the other way is, is very confusing to the entire public. And, and let me say as well, our thoughts and prayers are with Commissioner Franz, who is in the hospital. He was unable to vote yesterday at the City Commission. I'm hoping all of this will work out and it'll be less divisiveness and less confusion amongst all of the citizens of Celine County and Salina. But again, I know that doesn't have anything to do with you guys today. You're just, you're caught in the middle of everything that's flying around. I just wanted to come on this morning and the reports have come out now from the FDA this morning as well as from the CDC that they are recommending a pause of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine due to many instances, and I'm trying to quote the article here, several instances of severe blood clots in recipients. And I was wondering if there was any way that we as a county, I don't know if Mr. Tiller is in attendance or not, but if we as a county could also follow that guidance and put a pause on the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. From what I understand from Mr. Tiller, that is the one that is available to minors. The Moderna and Pfizer are only available to adults and I for one would not want one of our children here in the county being, or having a problem with blood clots and us endangering them by giving them the shot. So I just wanted to put that out there and thank you again, guys. I had somebody contact me about last week and I appreciate you guys listening to us as citizens. Not just here in public forum, but in discussions and everything as well. Thank you, fellows.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? And Ivory.
Okay.
Ivory, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll just, in response to that last, I don't normally, you know, comment on public comment, but I wanted to correct something on the record. It's the Pfizer vaccine that's approved for use in 16 and 17-year-olds, not the Johnson &amp; Johnson. So, and I know the Health Department sent a message this morning that they are considering what to do with the new guidance that's coming out. So-
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. At this time, we'll move to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of prior minutes as presented, approval of tax role adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of payroll, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete from the consent agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. At this time, we'll move into action items. Item one.
Sexual Assault Awareness Month Proclamation. Sheila Beeson, Sexual Assault Awareness Advocate, D-VAC.
Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning. Thank you for having me today.
Yes.
I'm proud to be able to represent D-VAC and really appreciate this county for everything that they do for us. So without further ado, "To the people of Celine County, Kansas, greetings. Whereas, sexual violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem in Kansas. And whereas, sexual violence is any sexual act that is perpetrated against someone's will, which includes sexual assault, rape, unwanted touching, threatened sexual violence, exhibitionism, and verbal sexual harassment. And all types of sexual violence involve victims who do not consent or who are unable to consent or who refuse to allow the act. And whereas, 1 in 3 women and nearly 1 in 6 men experience some form of sexual violence in their lifetime. And whereas, 1 incident of rape is reported to Kansas law enforcement every 7 hours, 20 minutes, 55 seconds. And over 5,300 people receive services for sexual assault from Kansas Victim Agency organizations each year. And whereas, these statistics do not present the true prevalence of sexual violence due to under-reporting. And sex offenders often target people they perceive as vulnerable, less powerful, and less, or less credible. And whereas, the offender is known to the victim in the vast majority of cases, 80% in Kansas. And whereas, the effects of sexual violence may be felt directly after or for many months or years later. And confusion, anger, sadness, shame, guilt, helplessness, hopelessness, and self-blame are all common reactions to sexual violence. And whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas, also known as D-VAC, provides 24/7, 365 days a year, free and confidential services to victims of sexual violence in Celine County. And whereas, D-VAC is available at 785-827-5862 or toll-free at 1-800-874-1499. Now therefore, the Celine County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Celine County and urges, urge citizens to participate in this observance.
Well, thank you. And do you have anything going on this week or this month for-
Yes, yes, in light of, still, you know, we're still in a Zoom world and whatnot too. So we do have some events coming up, both in person and online, so we can meet the needs of everybody. This Friday, we're having at noon a lunch and learn with myself and our other sexual assault advocate, our campus advocate, Carly, through the Salina Public Library. It's called "What is Sexual Assault?" And then it says, "A Lunch and Learn with D-VAC." And so all that our citizens have to do is just go on to the Salina Public Library website, register, and it's free and we're going to be able to provide some information and maybe some guidance and some help, especially, you know, with the numbers as it is, somebody, everybody's going to know somebody that's been affected by sexual violence. So if we can help with that, that'd be great. We also have, let's see here, Denim Day is coming up and that's on the 28th and that's a nationwide campaign to help survive, support survivors and help reduce victim blaming. Unfortunately, there was a case back in 1998 where a ruling was, in Italy, was overruled because the victim was wearing tight jeans and the Supreme Court had decided that because the jeans were tight, the victim must have helped and removed her clothes and therefore consented, which this was a child and her driving instructor. So it was just preposterous to me. So what was cool though, was the next day, the ladies in the Italian Parliament wore jeans to work, to, in support of the victim. So we encourage everybody on the 28th who are at Denim to support survivors. And then lastly, we have Speak Night, which is something that we've done for years. Last year, we had it canceled due to epidemic, but we're just so, or pandemic, but we're so excited to be able to host with AdAstra again this year, 7:00 PM on the 31st. So we're going to wrap up the month with our activities and we're inviting the public to come and support survivors, maybe even read poetry that they've written or that they've found online that speaks to them. And if they want to, you know, perform music, we're just welcoming the public to do that. So we're excited about that. And AdAstra is also selling a drink this month in honor of D-VAC. So a dollar for every drink is the, it's a specific drink that Tammy designed. It's a blueberry and cinnamon cream soda. So we're excited about that. So thank you for your support.
And I have to sign the proclamation here.
Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move we proclaim April 2021 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Celine County, Kansas.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments by the commissioners? Do you have any comments by the public? Will call for a vote. Has been moved and seconded that we approve Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation. Call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wees, for bringing that back. And here's his proclamation here.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number two.
RFA 151-21 Bid Award for Bituminous Chip Sealing.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. So I'm here to discuss and take action on a Celine County Road and Bridge Department request to award the bid for bituminous chip sealing. Sealed bids were open on April 1st, 2021 at 11 o'clock. We did receive four bids. Circle C was a low bid for all projects totaling $909,592.60. You should have the bid tabs in your packet, which does provide additional details of the bid. Just as a comparison from last year's prices, we did have a 12, about a 12% decrease in prices over last year and that's really due to very competitive biddings. It's my understanding that KDOT's not bidding out a lot of chip seal projects on the state system. So there's quite a few contractors that are pretty, pretty hungry for work and so, to our benefit. So I was happy to see those prices. The chip seal work can begin as soon as the contracts are signed. However, all the work must be completed by October 26th of this year. As we've done in the past, you know, no work will be allowed during the wheat harvest activities. Also in your packet, you should have a county map with all of the roads that will be receiving the chip seal. Alternatives for action, one would be to accept the bid as recommended by staff or two would be to reject the bids and to rebid the projects. Staff recommends to accept the bid from Circle C Paving for the amount of estimated work to equal $909,592.60. Funds for these projects will be taken from the budgeted line item contractual asphalt. This account has a current balance of $2,500,000. Other contractual work to be taken from this account does include the hot mix asphalt overlays, the crack sealing, and the aggregate shouldering contracts.
Okay. Are there any comments by the commissioners? Any comments by the public? It'll bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Circle C Paving for the amount of $909,592.60 as the amount estimated as presented by staff. Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 151-21 Bid Award for Bituminous Chip Sealing. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Justin. Have a great day. Item number three.
RFA 152-21 Tape Library Replacement. Kevin Ellis, Computer Technology Assistant Director.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Information Technology is requesting permission to expend $11,052.92 for the purchase of a Spectrology Stack Tape Library from Eagle Technology of Salina, Kansas, and then to purchase the LTO Tape MLM Media Tank Cartridges from CDWG for $1,176. The tape library is part of our backup solution that allows a secure recovery option should we need to restore files due to a disaster, either natural or man-made. We do several types of backups and tape allows us to store the backup off-site, therefore keeping it safe from ransomware attacks. We have had our current LTO V Tape Library since 2011 and it is at end of life. The other consideration is the capacity of the tapes. The LTO V has a native capacity of 1.5 terabyte and therefore takes seven tapes for one backup. The LTO V has a capacity of 12 terabytes and therefore should allow several years of backup using only one tape per backup. Your alternatives for action would be to approve as presented, deny the request, or send staff back for research and consideration. Staff recommends funding this project through Eagle Technology of Salina for the $11,052.92, which is the low quote for the tape drive and annual maintenance and shipping. This quote also is based on the Kansas State Contract, which is number 10932AC and, and also spending the $1,176 with CDWG for the tapes. The budget impact on this was that Celine County budgeted $14,100 in the 2021 TIP budget for this project. There will also be a $1,349.40 annual maintenance cost on the hardware.
Okay. Are there any comments by the commissioners? Any comments by public? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the 21 TIP purchases presented by staff. Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 152-21 Tape Library Replacement. Any other comments? If not, I'll call for a vote. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Vote, motion passes five to zero. Item four.
RFA 150-21 Assurance Partners Agreement. Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a request for action to continue our partnership with Assurance Partners. We have used them for the past several years as the county's insurance broker. This particular request is to continue with their services for an additional three years, which would be from 2021 to 2024. They are responsible for assisting us with managing our risks and controlling our insurance costs as well as marketing our insurance needs to negotiate with companies to help us with controlling our insurance costs as well in the end. They also provide us with technical support if the county does have a particular claim and then also provide us with program and administrative support too. Your alternatives today are to sign the agreement with Assurance or not sign the agreement and provide us with some additional direction. We do recommend the signing of the agreement. It is important to note that there are other insurance brokers that are out there and in our review with this, we had considered the fact that we also have several major capital projects that are going on at this time, to include the jail, the radio project, and the Expo Center, that once those are completed, we know we're going to change our insurance needs pretty drastically. So our recommendation- So our recommendation was to continue our services with Assurance Partners for this particular timeframe. But then, at the point that this agreement expires, that we would revisit it to look at other insurance brokers for our insurance needs in the future. It is a three-year agreement with the first year costing $30,900 and does have a 1.5% increase to the fee in subsequent years. It has been budgeted appropriately in the 2021 Budget General Fund for Insurance Needs.
Okay. Any comments or questions by the commissioner? Any comments by the public? Or bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the agreement with Assurance Partners for RFA 000-21.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 150-21 Assurance Partners Agreement. Are there any further comments?
Okay, I did not give you those numbers. The RFA on my sheet says 000, but I see on the request for action. So I will amend my motion to say RFA 150-21.
Okay. That's right. That's correct, Bob, because it has been changed. Okay. All right. It has been noted that it has, is RFA 150-21? Tammy?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, all right. Now, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We'll move on to informational items. Item one.
County Support for Housing. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So our community has experienced some wonderful economic development news over the past year with the announcement of a couple of major projects here locally. The downside of that growth is that it has created a bit of a housing crunch in the community. Realtors report that houses are moving very briskly. It's difficult for many folks to find apartments, et cetera. So the city of Salina has been undertaking a study regarding housing needs and trying to identify different options to increase the supply of housing in the community. And as part of that, they've been receiving requests for some tax abatements, and they've looked at what other options they might be able to come up with to drive down the cost of housing rather than issuing those tax abatements. So they've looked at things such as installing water and sewer infrastructure or other sort of in-kind types of things that they could use to sort of spur housing development. And one of the things that they have hit upon is the potential of offering free land to housing developers. And so the city manager approached both myself and the superintendent of USD 305 and said, hey, we know you guys have some parcels that are not currently in development. Ours was purchased for a particular building at one time. The school districts was purchased for a potential school at one time. Could you please take those to your governing bodies and find out if there's any interest in having those be offered as part of a housing incentive package? So that's really why I'm here today, is just for the commission to discuss and provide me any feedback on whether there is any level of interest at all among the commission in having the approximately 300 acres down at Schilling in Ohio be considered as part of a community housing incentive package. If there's not, if we want to keep the land, then I'll report that back to the city manager. If there is any level of interest on the part of the commission, then that would just generate a whole series of other discussions in the future. They, they're just trying to do an inventory at this point. They don't know if they have any housing developer that would actually bite on this concept. So that's what I have to share. Be happy to hear the commission's discussion and attempt to answer any questions I can.
Well, I'm, it's obviously, we're not going to use it for an expo center. So I mean, that comment in this report is, is kind of useless. I am in favor of exploring the county divesting themselves of that property in some fashion. And if that helps the housing crunch, I mean, let whoever buys the property be that person. I certainly don't want to see the county get into a development, be the developer, so to speak. But I'm in favor of exploring the things that you just said, a series of options to tell us where we want to go, what we might do, who owns the land adjacent to it, because I think most of our land does not butt up against Ohio Street, if I'm not mistaken. I might be wrong on that, but I thought most of it sit back in there. It's kind of a circle, a U-shaped property. So whoever would purchase it would really kind of need to be purchasing the other properties to make that thing a useful piece of, I've been in favor for a couple of years now, or at least since we've signed the agreement for 30 years for the expo center to be in Kenwood Park. I'm in favor of, of looking at the options.
In regards to your question, Phil, I am not interested in looking at this anymore. In short, the answer, my answer is no. I'm not in favor of giving away county-owned land.
I, let me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm not in favor of giving it away either. I'm in favor of selling it.
I believe, and you'll have to check with legal on this, but there's an agreement when we purchase that property that the first opportunity of that land would go back to...
The Land Institute.
The Land Institute. For them to, they would get first offer of that, but they'd have to meet, I guess, whatever. I mean, if, if the city wants us to give them the land, I'm sure Land Institute would welcome the gift of that land. So secondly, there's not going to be any more land made. We have what we have. Needs that might come along for the county 30, 40, 50 years from now are unknown. I'm not saying I'm against this. I'm saying we need to walk very careful and really think this through before we do anything, because once, once we relinquish that land, to go out and have to find land again, like we just did with the jail, can, can be a task. And, and when you have that property, you have the availability or the opportunity for growth in whatever manner it might be. But I would, I would welcome conversation.
Phil, did I miss something here? Because I'm hearing that, that, is the city asking us to give that land away? To the, to them for this purpose?
It would not be to give it to the city. It would be to include as part of a package of incentives to a potential developer. But yes, the concept would be to subsidize a developer to increase housing in the community, which means either free land or definitely below-market rate land. So I understand your comment was around sale, not giving it away.
And I mean, I think all three of us are kind of saying the same thing, just in a little bit different fashion, a little bit different manner, that we are open to the exploration of the options. But I think it would not be in the best interest of the taxpayers for us to just give this, give this land away for someone else's economic gain. I mean, I know what it would mean in terms of economic gain for the community, but right now, I don't, I don't think we're in a position, and I think Commissioner Wees brings up a very good point, that I think the Land Institute does have first, first option on that land.
Yeah, that's on a portion of the, there are three sort of separate parcels, and they have an option on the southernmost piece, yeah.
I think we're all open to listen.
And I, I agree with everyone. I just, I just, of course, you know, it's my, me, I'd like to back up with Mr. Wees. Commissioner Wees is that I look at it as like, we have the 300 acres. I would prefer, prefer, prefer the county look at it down the road and see what, what will happen. You know, we, we have a 30-year lease on, on the expo center right now, okay? But that could change in seven years. I mean, there's, there's issues and things that could be coming down. Also, the thing about it is, I look at it as some people wanting to build over in that area already. And, and I know when the airplane, model airplane place went in out there, there was a lot of discussion then at that point to keep it down because of the noise that it makes. And, and it's, it's an area that I just think that we need to, to keep. And I'm, yeah, I'd look at that.
Mr. Shadwick, do you have any comments?
Well, I'm, I'm happy to continue conversations with whomever to help with the housing. However, a couple of concerns, definitely not that property. That's not necessarily the intent of how we purchase that and would not be appropriate to pass that along. But happy to continue further conversations about other properties down the line. The one concern I would have is if subsidized the developer, there's no guarantees that the property to the customer, which is essentially what we're trying to do. They're still going to sell that house or lot or whatever at market value. And I don't think it's taxpayers' role to subsidize the developer. I get the end goal, which is trying to get more housing, but that would be my concern.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
I think I've got the message, and I'll relay that back to the city manager. Thank you.
Okay. Item two.
County, excuse me, County Administrator's Update.
Okay. I'm on again. Just a few things. First off, it is budget development season for the 2022 budget. This is the part of the process where the commissioners don't have a lot of involvement, but our departments do. So just to update you, departments submitted their first round budgets last week, which was budget to current levels. And this week, they are now working on second round, which is any additional requests that they are going to submit for next year, including capital, technology improvement, equipment improvement, and personnel requests. So those are due to our office on the 26th. And next week, I will be in front of the commission to review our first quarter budget performance for this year. The second item is the jail, as I mentioned last week at this time. The City Planning Commission did meet last Tuesday afternoon. I'm happy to report that they recommended approval of our PDD, which will go to the city commission on the 26th. And we are in the process of scheduling closing on the property. So that is a good thing. We also, last week, with the architects and with sheriff staff and IT staff, had some pretty extensive discussion around technology needs for the new jail, particularly in the area of cameras. Third item is just a brief legislative update. The legislature is gone until May the 3rd. They have completed their first adjournment and will be back for the veto session later in, in the year. Not a whole lot new. We've obviously talked about a couple of the significant bills previously. One item that did crop up, though, right at the end, was an amendment to House Bill 2313, which would allow for the reimbursement of property taxes for a business that is competing with government. So that's an interesting one. If you think of like a, a private gym in town, private fitness center in town, and then a city rec facility that offers some of the same equipment and classes and that sort of thing, that private business could potentially claim back their property taxes. And the problem with having these things come up at the very end of a scheduled legislative session is that there's not a lot of detail to these proposals. So we do not know at this point, because the language was not available as of yesterday, who they get to claim that property tax back from. Do they only claim the portion that's related to the government they're competing against? Or do they get to claim the full amount, which would affect other taxing entities? So that is just one new thing to keep an eye on as we move through the end of the session. And if you do see our local legislative delegation back in town during this next month here, that might be something to bring up to them as a concern. The final item that I had listed for today was the American Rescue Plan Act, and I ain't got nothing. I keep putting that on because I keep thinking that we will have an update from the US Treasury any day now, and we don't. So nothing to report on that one. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Administrator. Any other? Item number three.
Commissioners' Comments.
I'd like to make a comment retroactive to last week, when, when the administrator asked us to come up things, with things about our meeting process and how we do it, and I intended to do it last weekend. It escaped me. For that, I apologize. However, we have, all have committee assignments, and it has been our policy that we report these things back to the county, back to our commission. However, other than one or two isolated cases, we haven't, and I'm talking about all five of us, have not given a committee report or, or, you know, for whatever we're assigned to in over a year. And I'd like to see us getting back to doing that on a regular basis. If you attend, in my case, the Airport Authority or Salina Building, or the Building Authority, that, that we give those reports on a timely fashion. I mean, we're giving some of these agencies a lot of money, a lot of money, and yet commissioners aren't receiving any feedback on, you know, what's going on within those, those committees and those appropriated agencies. So I would like to encourage my fellow commissioners to, to start giving back reports on that. And I'm including myself in on that also. I've been lax in doing that myself.
Thank you, Commissioner Bob. Vidrickson, that was, that is an important deal. Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Is there, any other announcements? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you for attending.